Okay, today is Thursday, October 17th, 2024. It is 9:00 AM. This is the regular meeting of the governing board, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. If you're able to stand, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have all nine governing board members here today, so we have a quorum. And with that, I will jump to reading the meeting procedures document. The governing board conducts all of its meetings in compliance with Arizona Open Meeting Laws per Arizona Revised Statutes, Section 33-1804, and in concert with RCSCW bylaws, policies, and standing rules. Parliamentary procedures, as outlined in the most recent edition of Robert's Rules of Order, will also be followed in board meetings as appropriate, consistent with bylaw 3.07, entitled Procedures for Owner-member Meetings, and Standing Rules 2 and 3. All questions and comments are to be directed to the governing board president. All comments are entertained at the discretion of the governing board president. Speakers shall state their name and member number and speak in a courteous manner. The governing board president may limit commentary time and number of commentators/speakers on any issue. The governing board president also may redirect commentary at individual agenda items to the general guest comments/agenda line item, except when the board has discussed the agenda item and a formal vote is to be taken. All fire and safety precautions and regulations are strictly obeyed at all meetings per the guidance of the Arizona Fire and Medical Authority. The governing board reserves the right to adjourn any meeting if the safety of the board, meeting attendees, or others is deemed at risk, or if there is too much disruption to continue. After one verbal warning by the president, the board also reserves the right to ask any meeting attendees to leave any meeting should their behavior be deemed dangerous or unacceptable. Disciplinary action may follow. And with that, we'd like to start a recognition section. Let me bring something up. I'm going to move over to the lectern over here. So you no doubt noticed the guests that have come in today. This will kind of set the stage as to why they are here today. I'm going to read from a portion of the press release that went out yesterday about an event that, for me, is just incredibly inspiring and makes me proud to be here in Sun City West. "Sun City West Residents Honored For Using AED To Save A Life." Warren Brown was just stopping by the RH Johnson Fitness Center on October 5th to say goodbye to the monitors. Quote, "A sweet old lady came out from the fitness area and said, 'Please call 911. It's a possible heart attack.'" Brown recalls, "In things like this, timing is everything. Timing. The right people, in the right place, at the right time." Upon hearing of... Brown had retired from the rec centers a couple of weeks prior and hadn't gotten the chance to say goodbye to all of his coworkers. On the evening of October 5th, he stopped in to say his farewells and ended up saving a life. Upon hearing the alert of a possible heart attack, Brown rushed into this fitness center while monitor Teresa Panko was calling 911. She had just been alerted to the emergency as well by another man on her treadmill. Resident Tony Geralmo also jumped in to help. "We were in the right place at the right time," Geralmo said. "I was working out at fitness. I had come in a little later by chance. I was in the stretching room, and I always keep the door open, and I heard somebody say, 'Call 911. There's a possible heart attack.'" I hopped up and started heading over. There was another guy who I've since found out was Warren. Bear with me here. While Panko spoke with dispatch, Geralmo and Brown located the victim, slumped over in a recumbent bike and in obvious need of help. He was already cold and blue, still on the seat, with his feet still strapped in the pedals, Brown said. "We got him down to the ground as best we could, and I started CPR while Tony went to get the AED." AEDs are automated external defibrillators, portable devices used to help people who are experiencing cardiac arrest. The rec centers has 53 of them deployed around its facilities in strategic locations to help in such circumstances. Having worked at the rec centers, once at Coontz and later at RH Johnson, Brown knew just where the AEDs were located. He also knew how to perform. So that tells you what happened. There's more to the press release, but I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. But it's just an amazing, for me, to read this just sends chills up and down my spine of how these people saved the life of one of our neighbors here in Sun City West. So I'm going to ask Kirsten Peterson to come up and introduce our guests, and we'll take the next step.
Good morning. Appreciate you all coming in to celebrate this. Hopefully, it doesn't happen very often, but when it does, the outcomes can be very good, and so we are pleased to have the firefighters from station houses, Firehouse 101 and 102. And we do have several of the folks that were actually on... I don't know if it's on the truck or on the rig at the same time that came to the actual rescue of this particular community member. So I have Captain Tom Geffert. He would like to just kind of step up and we'll have you come... Yep, come right on over. I have Engineer Josh Petchel is not here today. We want to call him out. Firefighter Josh Martindale also could not be with us. Firefighter Chris Ferrara. Certified Emergency Paramedic Annabelle Noland. And EMT, Emergency Medical Technician Kaylee Sharp. And if everybody could just give them a big round of applause. And so we'd also like, we'll just have you go ahead and stand here. We're going to bring up the two of the folks that were actually at the scene. We talked about in the press release Warren Brown and Teresa Panko and Tony Geralmo. Tony unfortunately had a pre-engaged item that he couldn't disengage from, so we'll make sure that we get with him on his return. But we do have Mr. Warren Brown. Warren Brown was a facilities assistant with the rec centers and had been with us for about a year and a half before he retired. We'll try to coax him back, but he was a facilities assistant for about a year and a half. Warren, if we could have you go ahead and come on up? And the firefighters are presenting each of these folks with what they call a challenge coin from their fire district or fire department. It's a great honor. We'd also like to have Teresa Panko, who was the monitor on call or working that night. Teresa's been with us five years, and she works as a monitor. So if I could have Teresa come on up? So in addition, the rec centers of Sun City West, and I will try to not get fingerprints, we had created a diamond-shaped paperweight for all three, for Teresa, Warren, and Tony, and it says Sun City West with our logo, lifesaver, and their name. And so we'd like to present those to them right now. And just a little bit more additionally, our safety department has been held by Glenn Blackshear. Glenn is retiring here, but he has been the person... If I could get him to stand up, and let's recognize Glenn for all the work that he's He is the direct link to all of the AEDs and making sure that they're all functional and inspected annually... or monthly, actually. So he's going through and doing all those things. From the rec centers at Sun City West to the entire fire department, again, I know that Jack said this, but thank you. We deeply appreciate all that you do. We see your sirens. We see you coming to the aid of our community members, and we are very thankful.
Did you go to those person...
Yes, I surely will.
12 years ago, we... My wife, she would CPR until they got back.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I got one of those, too.
I don't know about you, but that was great. Let's see. Okay, back to normal business. Yeah, we have to. So our next will go to Agenda Item 3, Approval of Our Minutes from the September 19th, 2024, Annual Owner-member and Governing Board Regular Minutes Approval. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to those minutes? Seeing none, they will be accepted as written. We'll go to new business. We have a motion from Director Novello.
Thank you, President Leary. I move that the governing board accept the fiscal year 2023-24 Clifton Larson Allen Audit Report per RCSCW policy.
Do I have a second? Second?
So I can explain a little bit. As we all know, this is part of our policies and procedures that every year we conduct a financial audit of the operation, if you will, of Sun City West from a financial standpoint. The full audit report is here in our packet, as well as the cover letter from CLA, Clifton Larson Allen. They presented all of this to the Budget and Finance Committee a few days ago at our monthly meeting on the 15th. I guess the thing to call out here is that the report was completely unexceptional. That's a good thing in a financial audit. No findings, no issues at all. The CLA and any public accounting firm reviews financial performance against... for compliance with generally accepted accounting procedures and standards, so GAAP and GAS. So they found no exceptions. They're all... The details are there for us. We have our CFO here who can answer questions if necessary, but again, as a part of our fiduciary responsibilities, I believe it was an unexceptional, and this is a good thing, an unexceptional audit this year.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board for Director Novello? Okay, any questions from the audience? Any questions online?
Nothing online.
Yeah?
Thank you. Mr. President, I just want to real quick point out and thank Cliff Swan and his team for such a great work on this. And the one thing I thought was exceptional was the comment by CLA that they had, as they put it on their slide, "unmodified opinion," and as they put it, "which is the highest level of assurance a CPA firm can provide." So that just shows you the level that they went through to audit our records and then what they found, which was that high-level assurance. So great job, Cliff Swan and the team, and I appreciate everything they do.
Yes, agreed. Thank you. Okay, with that, I will do a voice vote. So yes is to accept the audit as written, and no is to decline the audit. And we'll start with Director Hurley. Yes. Director Rhodes?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski?
Yes.
Director Chatten?
Yes.
Director Novello?
Yes.
Director Graham?
Yes.
Director Horvath?
Yes.
Okay. Five, six, seven, eight. Okay, that's great. Eight yeses, zero nos. The audit is accepted and will be filed. We go to 4.02. This is another motion from Director Novello. She's got about five in a row here.
Only four. Thank you, President Hurley.
Okay, Leary. That's okay, I've been called worse. She got back at me for last week, so...
That's right. That was an unintentional slip. Thank you, President Leary. And I did that because Director Hurley did say that he was listening very carefully to everything I was saying. Each year, a part of every one of our committees reviews the policies that are currently in existence and ensures that they are aligned to the best interests of our community, of course, but our most important responsibility is to make sure that all of our policies support, of course, in alignment with our governance structure, support federal, state, and local law. So this one has been expedited, a couple of these. So the first motion I will make pertains to FI-13, our collection policy. I move that the governing board approve the ingross language revisions to financial policy FI-13, collection policy, as redlined.
Do I have a second? Director Horvath is seconded. You may discuss now.
Thank you. So this policy has been mentioned a few times, I believe, in governing board meetings, or I should say, the law change that has been mentioned a few times. We've had a few changes that are outlined here in our packets to Arizona statutes. And specifically, if you head down in your packets, we have the ARS 33-1802 and 33-1202, as well as 33-1256 and 33-1807. These statutes were enacted recently and pertain or impact our ability to collect on things like liens, late charges, et cetera. So we've discussed some of the law, and I'm not a legislator, nor am I a lawyer, but we... The Recreation Centers of Sun City West, led through our CFO, Cliff Swan, worked with legal counsel to get their input and revisions to the financial policies pertaining to both of these topics, but specifically on FI-13. The changes that you see redlined were reviewed with Budget and Finance, and we questioned a lot of it, but again, in the end, we have to defer our expertise on the law and their impact to the advice that we receive from counsel. So what you see before you are the redline changes. We made just one small change through Budget and Finance, just to clarify wording, but otherwise, what was recommended here brings us into compliance with the statutes that have changed recently. Any questions from the committee?
Any questions from the board? Yes, Director Rhodes?
Christine, I appreciate all the work that the committee has done on this. Anytime you pick up a policy that is highlighted like this, you know, you look at it very closely because you want to ensure that there are substantive changes. And I'm aware of the changes in law. There's two comments that I have to make, one of which is... And when I read this, I suspected what was happening when you accelerated the timeline. Just to point something out, because I think it's a bit draconian to have the timeline that we have. Now, I understand why we have it, but we're going to, according to this, after 60 days, we're going to put a lien. Right now, it's after 90 days.
That's correct.
And everything's being moved up, and I understand why. You know, because the types of fees that what we can collect is a lot is changed, and it doesn't give us near as much time. But I do want to point that out because I think that is a... That's something that our homeowners would like to know. And the other thing I want to ask, and this is under 3.2.6. It's in the third box down on the table, under the occurs column. It's highlighted administrative collection fee is added. My sense in reading that is that's our own cost in staff time, and perhaps if we have to go to some type of an external collection agency. So is that how I'm reading that?
That is my understanding as well. And again, either General Manager or CFO can go into the detail, but the specifics, and thank you for calling those out. The specifics here that we did move the time, or we're proposing, I should say, recommending moving the timeline up for several reasons. The collection process becomes very different now, and we're no longer assured that we can retain those fees, that we can actually get the fees that are associated with collections. So that's one of the reasons why, and I'm sure that both the lawyers and the collection lawyers have advised Recreation Center's operations staff to move those, to accelerate those periods. So after hearing that explanation, the Budget and Finance Committee and I, we all agreed with it, but it is a good call out. As for the administrative collection fee, I'm sure that Stephen or Cliff could expound on that, but that's exactly what it is. It enables us to recoup expenses associated because right now the collection fees are no longer assured. Is that correct, Stephen?
Yeah, thank you, Director Novello. So yeah, we're still working through how it's going to look internally and operationally, what those costs are going to look like, but it's the ability to add the fee in there to cover the costs of having to do additional work that we would normally have done through our collection attorney in the past.
And I don't want to... I know, I support that, I do. But it does open the door that if there's a staffing issue that's involved, if this becomes such an onerous task, then I think we have to look at that again to say, you know, what is it that we want to do in there? But anyway, I appreciate that. I think the thing that probably concerned me most was the acceleration of the timeline, and I fully understand, we just don't really have a lot of time now to deal with it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Any questions online?
Nothing online.
Okay, with that, then we'll go to a voice vote to either approve or not approve this motion. Can you read the motion again? Director Novello?
Yes, President Leary, just a moment. I'm backtracking to my notes. I move the governing board approve the ingross language revisions to financial policy FI-13, collection policy, as redlined.
Thank you. Yes will approve the motion, no will deny the motion. I'll start down at this end with Director Horvath.
Yes.
Director Graham.
Yes.
Director Novello.
Yes.
Director Chatten.
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski.
Yes.
Director Williams.
Yes.
Director Rhodes.
Yes.
Director Hurley.
Yes.
It passes unanimously, so it will be filed as such. We will move on to Agenda Item Number 4.03, another motion from Director Novello.
Thank you, President Leary. In a similar situation, we'll go into the details momentarily. "I move that the governing board approve the ingross language revisions to financial policy FI-17, asset preservation fee as redlined."
Do I have a second? Second, Director Williams, would you please begin the discussion?
Thank you, Board. Again, this is, this came from a similar situation with statute changes. The, the challenge we're going to have here with the asset preservation fee is that, or one of the changes that we have with the current statute, it's on, it's vague in terms of the actual impact. But today, we impose an APF or asset preservation fee, well, we always impose it on the transfer of title. And today, that includes the transfer of title within a trust or within a family member in an inheritance situation. But that capability no longer exists under the new law as we understand it. So we needed to, to make some changes to the policy that, that sets forth that we can do that. The challenge comes that the definition of the family member, because that is now an acceptable transfer in an inheritance or an estate situation, that definition is really broad. The specifics of how we can assess this fee, also a little unclear at this point, and much of this will be set forth in the coming years, plural, through case law. So the specifics that you can see here set forth is that a lot of the specifics that were previously included in this policy have been removed. That's because we really, we, we don't know some of the specifics. We do know that some of what was set forth in the original policy can no longer be included. So what you have here in gross is that we've removed several sections. When I say we, it's the royal we, under the advisory of our legal counsel, again, to go through and make sure that we are in compliance with the statute and law. So we've reviewed several pieces of that, which changes the numbering. Other than that, and making the alignments, again, that's what, that's really what this is substantially included in. But I'm open for questions, and again, we'll defer the operational impacts, if any, because that, again, is not included in any policy we set forth. The procedures, of course, will change, but we're not, we're looking at the policy that, that drives the procedures, if you will.
Thank you, Director Novello. Any questions from the board for Director Novello? Director Hurley.
Yes, I have a question for Director Novello, and I'm not quite sure how to put this, but prior to this, if the deed passed to a, an heir, we charged the asset preservation fee. If they sold it within a year, they refunded, we refunded it to them, correct?
That's correct.
Section 3.3 were the exception. If it goes to an heir now, by the definition of family, they don't have to pay the asset preservation fee at all. So this section about refunding it, I'm wondering if that needs to be struck?
We were told it did not, right? Even the, the one-year limitation, thank you for bringing that up, Director Hurley, that, that one year no longer does exist, right, for, in, in the law, we can't, we can't do that now. But my understanding is, again, on their review, that this was still intact. I wasn't involved in, at the detail level with the review, so again, I would defer to Stephen or to Cliff in terms of the specifics of what the lawyers may or may not have said on that particular point.
Okay, and just as a side note, yesterday, my wife and I were at an attorney's office getting our paperwork updated, wills and that sort of thing, and the attorney that I was talking to didn't even know this. So, and he's a, he was in Sun City, so this is really brand-new.
I believe, that's correct, I believe it was only passed or enacted two weeks ago, so this is very, very new. Am I correct?
14th of September, thank you, so a month ago. So, to answer your question, Director Hurley, I believe it's left in there because this is for the transfer of title for little to no value. So if it was sold for value to a family member, then that would, they would have the year to resell that and recoup a, a APF fee. So this is the transfer of little to no consideration. I believe that's why they left it in there.
Should it specify that?
Well, we cite the statute with special, specifies that.
Okay, well, since this is so brand-new, I just wanted to be as clear as possible to people that read it.
Yes, agreed, and I think Director Novello talked about this a little bit. Because this is so brand-new, again, we're trying to keep the policy as broad and encompassing as possible because there's going to be some probably legal battles and things that are going to happen at the state level here in the next year or two that, we just want to make sure, and the attorney wanted to just make sure that we had all of the ability to do what we need to do and keep the policy as strict to the, strict to the ARS code, but also give us flexibility.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add, President Leary, to this point as well, the Budget and Finance Committee spent a long time reviewing this and had a lot of questions about it for that very, for some of these very reasons. And thankfully, our policies require that each of our committees review all of these policies, at least annually, but the emphasis is at least. So if something changes between now and the end of the fiscal year, we can certainly revisit and recommend another change to the policy. We hope not, we're keeping it broad because right now, this is so brand-new and we don't know. We believe, the, the committee believed in the end that this is sufficient to move forward, that it serves our organization, we concur with the legal counsel's advice. We do have to keep an eye on that and on the actual operations. If there are additional considerations that would warrant a change, we will bring that to the committee and, of course, here to the governing board. Just wanted to add.
Director Rhodes.
Thank you. What, we've, we've actually seen the verbiage on this probably three or four months ago, I believe, because I know that we, we have had sidebar conversations about this. When I first saw this and read this, I thought, oh my gosh. You know, when they say it's not about the money, it's about the money, you know, it's $5,000 plus in APFs, and I was afraid that it was going to have a significant financial impact on us. I don't think that's the case. We haven't seen it yet, but this would only be for those people, for those heirs, heirs who have inherited the property and actually retain it, to stay in it. They will be exempted from paying the APF. If they sell within, within the year, in the old days, we would have given them, we would have refunded, but if they sell it after it's been inherited, then the new buyer will have to pay the APF. So I, I think it remains to be seen, I don't think it's going to be a lot of money. I know Cliff and I have had this discussion before, so, I mean, I think that's just more of an editorial comment, that it's not going to be as, cost us as much as we think.
Well, we, we, we cert, all certainly hope so, and as the, it's, it leaves the, the team in a difficult position in terms of recommending a budget to us, but we will see the outcomes of that analysis and consider it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board? Director Pajaskowski.
You're getting good at that, Jack, the Pajaskowski name. Do, this is too.
I grew up in a town with a lot of Polish people.
Mind you, I married into that name. Anyway. Do we have any idea how, through our sales, how many are inherited? How many do they keep, I mean, do you guys probably don't keep track of that, right? I mean, I don't know.
Indirectly, we do, but we don't. So I guess what I would say is, we have this program called the Reds Program, which we had stated three or four years ago, four years ago, maybe five. And all of those transfers of titles include these types of transactions that are kind of non-traditional transfers. So that's really the baseline for us. So, and the baseline of that, we're analyzing to see what the impact of that will be year over year, at least through the first six months of this year, so that as we put the budget together for next year, we can take that into consideration.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Director Horvath.
Okay, so for clarification, are we going to redefine what the family is? Or you said it was?
If I may. The burden of proof, or statements and burden of proof is on the inheritor or the heirs, right? So as I understand it, we're not going to, we, we really shouldn't even attempt to set forth what that definition is in policy, because it's really unclear. The, the team has advised us, the operations team has advised us that their procedures will include some method, if you will, of requesting that statement in order to, if you will, waive the, because the definitions of family can be very, very broad, and that's one that our le, our lawyers have advised is probably going to be challenged under case law, so we have to stay.
So, so as a follow-up question to that, so the lawyer recommended that we do this now, even though there's a good possibility that, that'll be changed in the, and challenged?
No, that's not, their, their advice was that, that the ARS will not be challenged. It's the definition of family, maybe, right now, it's very broad and it's not included specific, it's mentioned, I believe, in the statute that we've all read, but it's not, how do you actually define yourself as a family member? And how extended will that be? That, it's, the spec, the specifics will probably emerge over time. But no, the challenge will be there. So our, the need that we had to accelerate the review of these policies and bring them to the governing board today was driven by the fact that there is a new statute, there is a change, and our current policy does not align to the law, so we needed to do that.
Thank you, and one more follow-up, just to be sure. So if, if, say for example, a son inherits the home and sells it within a year, he will get a refund?
No, not any, at this point, there is no APF charged at all. Under the new policy, I should say, there would be no APF charged if someone comes forward and says, I am a family member.
I just wanted to be sure on that, thank you very much.
Director Hurley.
Yes, I'd just like some clarification. On Section 3.6, it, it references ARS Section 11-1134. Could we get that checked? That, shouldn't that be an 18-something? Because I think elevens, the ARS elevens deal with condominiums.
I, I defer to your expertise on that, I don't know the difference between an 11 and an 18. My read on this is that this is an exemption clause, so perhaps that has to do with the reason why. And again, defer to the expertise of our legal counsel on that. I don't know if that came up specifically, but I am not familiar, and I didn't question it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good discussion. Any other questions, comments from the board? General Manager, do you have any questions, comments? Any questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, any from online?
Nothing online.
Okay, we will go and do a vote, I'll do a voice vote again. Yes is we approve, I read the motion again. Oh, yes, Director Rhodes.
Director Leary, before we do that, because I, I think that Director Hurley has a valid point, we need to get clarity on that reference. So I would support, I would support this, but I do want to have clarity, and, and that's probably something that, that doesn't really have to be done, you know, as a condition of voting, but I, I don't want to put an inappropriate reference in there. So I'd like to have that done before it's.
If the, if the team is acceptable to that, I would take that back, we can take that back to legal counsel. If there is an inappropriate reference, we'll be back to the next, we'll be back with that really quickly. So, but that's a great point, and since I couldn't speak to it, if that's acceptable to Stephen and Cliff, we can quickly check that. If there's a need, and we'll come back with an answer at our next governing board meeting.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Okay, would please read the motion again, you, Director Novello.
Certainly. "I move that the governing board approve the ingross language revisions to financial policy FI-17, asset preservation fee as redlined."
Okay, we will do a voice vote again. Yes is you would approve the motion. No is you would not approve the motion. I'll start with Director Hurley.
Just to clarify, yes is to approve the motion with the clarification of this reference?
With the clarification forward by Director Rhodes.
Yes.
Thank you. Director Rhodes.
Yes.
Director Williams.
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski.
Yes.
Director Chatten.
Yes.
Director Novello.
Yes.
Director Graham.
Yes.
And Director Horvath.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes as amended, and we will amend that. And Director Novello, can you bring back a confirmation one way or the other at our next meeting?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to Agenda Item 4.04, the Budget Timeline Process. Again, Director Novello, the floor is yours.
This is the Christine Novello Show today. No, I shouldn't be so flip. The budget calendar that's included in our packets today has been created by, and reviewed, created by our finance team and reviewed by Budget and Finance. So there, really, for our information, a couple of quick highlights. We've been through, over the past few meetings, we do have a new process this year that we're, that we're working within in terms of having our committees review and some of these recommendations and to champion those recommendations. So we are making some tweaks, but in the end, we're still ending up at the same place. So just know that we'll have a budget draft at Budget and Finance coming up at our next meeting, which is November the 19th. And that, just a, a quick draft, we'll be looking at capital and so forth. You can see those are coming up in January. Will be, the, I think the big highlight that we're all, we have it on our, on our calendars, and I urge the rest of the Association to do the same. Tuesday, February the 18th, that's when we're going to actually see our first review of the, of the full budget at Budget and Finance. So we look forward to seeing a full house there, so we can get our first full review of the entire budget. The rest of the dates are laid out here, I'm not going to read them out to you unless you have any key questions. But again, make, make note of that, we've, I believe we have our community forum on here, yes, we do. Our community forum is coming up in April, so those have been scheduled as well. And we're all, we're heading into our 2025 season, if you will, for budget with a lot of work on our plates, but I'm confident that we will get the work done.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Novello? Yes, Director Hurley.
Yes, thank you, President Leary. My question is for Director Novello. On the very bottom of the chart, June 19th, 2025, facts and findings, capital and operating over $50,000 GM authority approved at the June governing meeting. Why wouldn't that be in the budget?
This, I believe, I know, and it's, once again, you're asking a great question, I'll defer to you, Cliff.
So this is the approval for the General Manager to execute, execute those contracts for capital items and operating items over 50,000. So it's not for the approval of the funds, it's the approval to, for the General Manager to execute contracts because the governing board is gone, and so we put this in per policy, so the govern, so the General Manager can execute on those items.
So we're preapproving what he's asking? So we're pre approving what he's asking for?
So the budget is approved, and you are authorizing the general manager to execute the budget in terms of the funds. What has been approved?
And I believe that's something that we do do.
We do it annually.
But I wasn't, the thing that tripped me up as well is, and I didn't notice that it's a facts and findings, as called out.
Yes.
But what we do approve as a governing board, or we review for approval at each June meeting, we authorize the general manager to proceed forward with executing those contracts once we've approved the budget. No?
Confusing.
It is, the policy, the bylaws and policy state that the governing board has to approve the general manager to execute contracts over 50,000. So we've presented what all of these items are going to be, and then it's the authorization of the governing board to, to tell him, go ahead and execute on this budget that has been presented for items over 50,000.
And so just to clarify, so if we, if we didn't do that, that would mean we'd have to wait till September, because the board is dark between, for July and August, so we wouldn't be able to accomplish anything, because I can't authorize the work to start without the board providing me the authorization to do that, is the intent behind it.
It would seem like if we pass those items in the budget, they would already be approved for you to go ahead and do it.
Well.
Yeah, there's, there's a semantics difference here, there's a difference between approving the budget, and there's a, between approving a budget and executing a contract over 50,000.
Right.
Yes.
There is also a philosophy difference, I mean, and I'm not sure, because being, I'm
just started, there is a philosophy that would say that if the board approved certain items, then that would be the authorization, so there is some philosophy involved, maybe a policy that needs to be looked at in order to make that happen that way.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Questions from the audience? Any questions online? Okay, great. I think that's it, we don't, there's no action needed on this one?
Nope.
So we will turn this back over to Director Novello for 4.05, another motion about the Sintas, Sintas Staff Uniform, five-year contract. Director Novello?
Thank you President Leary. I move that the governing board allow the RCSCW general manager to enter into a five-year staff uniform contract with Sintas, as outlined in the facts and findings dated October 11th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Director, Director Chatten has seconded, please begin the discussion, Director Novello.
Thank you, I believe we've discussed this at our general manager operations meeting most recently, et cetera, but this is a, a review that was conducted, we have uniforms that are, that are lent by, sometimes laundered by through Sintas. They've, they've held our contract for a while, this was, I believe, put out for, if not bid, then it was reviewed by several other potential contractors, and it was deemed in the best interests of our organization and operation to continue forward with Sintas. They were the best cost provider, the best service provider, we've had no issues with them, there are some efficiencies that will also be executed, if you will, or gathered through retaining them moving forward. So we entertain this as a facts and findings, and, and again, the motion is to move forward with a, an additional contract, a five-year contract, and you can see, there's a very brief outline at the back of our packet, to that effect.
Thank you Director Novello. I might add that the general manager is allowed to enter only into contracts of one year, so the purpose of this discussion is to allow him to enter into a five-year agreement. Five-year agreement was selected because we got a greater discount from Sintas.
Thank you.
Than if we had gone into a three-year agreement. So with that, are there any questions from the board? General, Mr. General Manager, any comments? Any questions from the audience? Any questions online?
Nothing online.
Okay, with this, I will do, please read the motion again.
Certainly. I move that the governing board allow the RCSCW general manager to enter into a five-year staff uniform contract with Sintas, as outlined in the facts and findings dated October 11th, 2024.
Okay, we'll do a voice vote, a yes is you approve the motion, a no is you do not. So I will start with Director Horvath. Director Graham.
Yes.
Director Novello.
Yes.
Director Chatten.
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski.
Yes.
Director Williams.
Yes.
Director Rhodes.
Yes.
And Director Hurley.
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Okay, with that, we'll go to Agenda Item 4.06, Director Graham, you want to bring us up to date on the tours for the golf courses?
Yes, sir, thank you, President Leary. I don't have a motion, but I do have a recommendation. The Golf Committee met on Thursday, October 10th, and reviewed all nine current golf policies. Thank you to those who attended that meeting, as it turned into somewhat of a marathon, but we accomplished a lot. The Golf Committee finalized the review of eight policies, and one policy, G06, Administration of Golf Tea Time Reservation System, remains under review to be discussed at the November 7th Golf Committee meeting. As a result, the Golf Committee recommends to the governing board to retain as written the following eight golf policies. G01, Refunding Prepaid Golf Cards. G02, High School and College Golf Teams. G03, Golf Course Maintenance. G04, Use of Powered Golf Vehicles. Now that particular policy did generate some discussion, but our recommendation is to leave it as is, and if things develop over the year, we'll revisit it. The next one is G07, Golf Course Liability. G08, Violation of Greens Fees Rules. G10, Non-Resident Play for Golf, Public Player Cardholders and Outside Play. And the last one is G12, Golf Tournament or Special Events. So as has been stated earlier, as we proceed through this year, the Golf Committee will make recommendations to the governing board for any policy changes or the creation of new policies if needed. And lastly, the Golf Committee has completed two of the four scheduled golf course tours, the two remaining tours will take place in November as the overseeing process comes to an end. That's my report.
Okay, thank you Director Graham. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Any questions from the audience? Any questions online?
None.
Okay, thank you Director Graham. Okay, with that, we've concluded our new business. I will go to Section 5, which is, will ask for director comments, I'll start with Director Hurley. Any comments?
Yeah, I would just, would like to thank the staff for the Sintas contract, this is one of those situations where the staff goes out and does something to save us money that they seldom get credit for, so thank you very much. And I also want to say, the recognition this morning was particularly meaningful for me, because 12 years ago, EMT saved my life. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Rhodes, any comments?
I do, I want to mention something, I'm the chairman of the Sports Pavilion, Sports Pavilion and Bowling Committee, and there's two issues that we're dealing with, and this is really just informational, is all, one of which is the food vendor that's in there, and the other is the food policy. And just as a matter of information, we are looking at those both very closely right now. We know that there's a lot of controversy over those issues, and we're hoping to come to some closure and a operational directive that will come out of that regarding food in the, in the bowling alley. Thank you.
Thank you Director Rhodes. Director Williams.
Yes. Properties Committee has completed three of our inspections, we have two left. We will be reconvening this next Tuesday at 6:45 a.m. in front of the entrance to the pool here. We spend two weeks doing the inspection on this property, because there are so many things here, but things are going well, and as stated before, we made no changes in any of our policies, they've all been reviewed and accepted as well-written. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Pajaskowski.
No, I'm good.
Director Chatten.
Charter Clubs Commission is going to be busy at our next meeting, there'll be several presentations, so come and join us.
And when is that meeting?
November 5th.
Okay, and, at 1:30 in this room. Okay, thank you. Director Novello.
Two quick thanks, the Budget and Finance Committee is very grateful to both the Properties Committee and the Golf Committee for their willingness to extend the walkthrough opportunity to our members. It will really help on several levels, we can actually hear the discussions about any of these proposed items, we can hear your committees' expertise, and we're better prepared. We are, the Budget and Finance Committee consists of all new members this year, members who are stepping up to committee membership for the first time, so it's great help to them, so they, they've commented to me privately and in our most recent meeting about that, and I just wanted to thank both chairpeople and to your associated committees for making that possible for us. Other than that, you've heard enough from me today, thank you.
Thank you. Director Graham, any comments?
No, sir, nothing to add.
Director Horvath?
I'd just like to add that the recognition was amazing this morning, that, that really struck a chord, well orchestrated, well done, we need to keep that up. So, yeah, thank you, President Leary, for your involvement, and also GM, Stephen?
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, I have no comments. Any comments from the audience? Oh, you're making this easy. Okay, any comments online?
Nothing online.
Okay, it is 9:57, I will adjourn the meeting.